Hold up our secretary, Sean.
Hey Carla, you want to come in here and then Sean can get it off when it's done copying? That way we can get started. Trade please.
Dan Loesch?
Here.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Here.
Scott Schwab?
Here.
Sue Mayberry here. Bonnie Donaldson here. Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Alrighty. Hey Sean? We're ready for you now. You can just explain it and we'll get those copies out if we need it.
We can share this as well.
Okay.
Dragonfly is purchasing, purchase, the classwork studio and follow those funds. I'm sure there's a real tree and all this stuff. They make you do all kinds of fun tests and stuff like that. Phase one, which is normal. We paid that cost to have an environmental study down there copying checks the adjacent areas. And upon that, it came, you'll see in there, three of the reasons why we needed to do a phase two study. And... Said an abandoned, unknown storage tank was discovered during the installation of new storm and water, storm sewer and water lines. Said the U S T underground storage tank was removed, however, the closure sampling was not performed. And then it says historical use of properties included automotive wrecking and or salvage operations. And adjacent properties have been identified with industrial operations prior to eighteen eighty-five through nineteen thirty-nine. So we've seen some of the old buildings downtown. What I'm coming here right now is I have a quote from SAS Environmental that Huntington Bank used, that they were like ninety-four hundred and change. They've already done it, I'm just looking to get the final bill. And my reason coming here is to ask the city to split the cost with me. Due to the fact that when they did the property, when they did this water sewer line, that the city didn't properly close out the dual needed. And again, that's what being pronounced documentation of the same size.
So we understand Sean and I had a conversation, and I think with Mr. Cozy prior to the meeting. So that's why we put him on the agenda. And Mr. Graham's here. So, so we understand you probably purchased the building with cash, maybe? And because you didn't have to go through bank financing, then the bank didn't require or didn't tell you about, hey, you need to have an environmental study though?
That's correct.
Okay.
And in our discussions with everybody in town at that time, we weren't aware that there was anything.
Okay.
We found out that there was a tank there after the fact. We got a card from the state saying, you know, there was a tank found, was there anything else? And I then at that point went and found out that the tank had been removed prior to us buying the property.
Okay.
And that was what we found out about.
When did you buy the property?
In oh four.
Okay.
And we, we did, I guess, our due diligence, meaning that my son has a degree in archaeology and a glass from Kent State. And he does, he has done excavations for a living for the state and for the county for such things like those artifacts. But we saw no evidence of any vegetation dieback or any other discolorations in the soils. And we actually did test bits and we went around with a metal detector to see if we could find anything. And we really never did. And so we went ahead with the project and we went up. Because we knew we were in industrial age, we've been occupied for two hundred years, so.
So you purchased the property and now you're in the process of selling it to Sean. Sean's applying for a bank loan and one of the conditions for the lender is to have a phase one environmental study done. And this is similar to what we're...
We're already past phase one, this is phase two, everything's been done. We just need to, again, one of the reasons because I had to do this, I had to pay this money, is there was, the city didn't, the buster, and you can see it, they didn't finish up the buster, to bury what, buried underneath the storage tank removal?
Yep.
That process wasn't completed. And so they had to test, that was one of the reasons they had to drill. The test, you know, one of the reasons they was drilling is because of that. And I just, again, the fact I'm bearing this cost to keep probably the oldest building in town, you know, a viable business, is again, I'm coming to the city to...
What was in the tank to begin with? Well, I mean, that makes a difference.
Absolutely.
Okay, that makes a difference, right?
Do we know why the city didn't finish? What its requirements were, do we know who was...
It says it was open, I need to say again, I poured out the stuff on there. You're going to get, send it back, but you guys can read. But it was, nonetheless, it was, it was open, they opened a buster for it or whatever they needed to open that process. And it just, there was never a closure sampling done to test the soil to go, nope, that's clean.
What year was that?
That was in nineteen ninety...
I think it was nineteen seventy-four?
Yeah.
I think it started in ninety-three, but ninety-four's when...
Yeah, after Gary, the price get to some of us.
Were you on that?
Actually, no, I can't. The gentleman, the gentleman came to my office to see if I had any records. I had nothing at all. I mean, we, we didn't have anything from that far back. I've only been here sixteen years. I do know that I went up and talked to Dan Mayberry, because he was employed there at the time. And he knew something about it. And then that's, I gave the gentleman's business card to Dan and asked him to follow up, because that's all we knew.
What year was this?
Ninety-three, ninety-four. When they ran the water line, when the city was putting water and sewer out market that way, they came across the tank, pulled the tank, threw the tank away, kept going up with the water and sewer.
So has this been brought up, this is already, you've already talked to the street department on this?
A metal company had talked about it for just data collecting.
Okay, I mean, this really could have come to committee. Because I don't know if this body's ready to make any decisions on, you know, on cost without doing any kind of due diligence on our part.
You're getting your paperwork here coming.
Okay, you see where I'm coming from, I just got blindsided by this thing and I need to really look at this thing closely and get a better handle on it.
We're not looking for an answer, you're just presenting it.
Oh yeah, if you want to get an answer, I would gladly take an answer, but in an affirmative sense too. But nonetheless, I just, yeah, I'm bringing this to you now. Because I know I sat on that side table, you guys don't move quick. So I'm bringing it to you now, so you can do your work.
Okay.
That's all, and that's, I'm not flipping chairs saying we need something right now. I'm just saying, look, I want to bring this to your attention, that's what happens, that's what I'm asking for.
And if I may, the Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks has evolved since its implementation. At one time inspectors, fire inspectors were grandfathered as underground storage tank inspectors. So I was grandfathered at one time. But that is past, so it could have been inspected by one of the fire inspectors from the fire department or something like that, but why you don't have closure on that?
So the, so a fire inspector could have signed off on it?
Back then, they might have.
And not gone to phase two?
That part I don't know about.
That's the engineer's end. In today's world, if that happened and we moved a storage tank from a property, would we then be obligated to go to phase two environmental? How would we handle that today?
Okay, I think it depends on the site, so.
I mean, if the site was close to an industrial and potentially with some underground gas...
When you have to do the phase one, the company that does the phase one will say, okay, we found evidence, now you have to do a phase two. Because they operate in the EPA guideline, I'm assuming. So that's, so it's whoever company you hire to do the phase one study, well then, based upon that, based upon that study, I don't think one's done.
Is there anything on a file at our zoning department on that address?
We looked, we looked through all the files. We went through every file here, there's, I found the project, but no discussion about the tank.
So I mean, upon removing the tank though, we should have had that same company that did phase one follow up and do phase two according to Buster rules?
Likely, yeah. I think Buster's in place as far as I believe.
I mean, this, this tank, in all probability dates prior to the Harkness family actually buying property. Because when they bought the property, the railroad was already there, the sightings were already there. There were coal yards across the street where the old grain mill was. There was a coal yard on the property behind it near Cherry Street. And there was another one where the canary was. In all probability, the tank was in existence. I mean, it was been there a very, very long time. There were no gas stations, so if you had trucks and that's what, that's how they delivered the coal then.
So as you're, you just said you completed your phase two, has it been remediated? Did they find any groundwater or ground contamination?
We're waiting on the final test for it, but it's, we're waiting on the final test. It sounds, I've talked to other people, I know you guys had to do phase two on this out here. I know they had to do it for the old D and D, you know, it just, so it's, I think it's becoming standard practice, but the fact that...
They even did that for the library.
Yeah, so it's become standard practice to do that. But again, it was part of the reason I'm building it, part of the reason I'm paying the money. And again, you guys can review and talk about it, and that's the part of the reason, that's the reason I'm here. Is that it was, I'm having to figure out a phase two study. Because, you know, one of the things, you know, it was a different time, different era, like you said, it was just things where they were. But, and you'll read in the paperwork that I had copied for you guys where it says, open, you know, ticket was open but not closed. It appeared, you know, it shows interviews in there. I have all, everything pertaining, except sitting on the current right now pertaining to that underground storage tank.
Do we want to go to a committee on this, or do we just...
Let us have the information first.
Okay. Alrighty. Alright, thanks Sean, you want to pass that information out to...
Yeah, I'll move back here a second, but yeah, just again, I was, I'm just looking to split the cost, I'm not...
What's the cost?
It was ninety-four and like ninety-four fifty, I think was the quote. I haven't got the final bill on it yet, but the process of drilling, nothing, there was no rate, they didn't have to stop and call in a special drill or, you know, they did their drilling all over the property. On there too also, it mentions, nothing to do with you guys so much, is they mentioned there was an auto salvage on the property. But if you look at this old, what year was this from?
Nineteen thirty-nine.
Nineteen thirty-nine. It shows, looks like where the Cherry Street Creamery is is where the actual auto salvage was. So I don't know how the properties are divvied up in here, because you can see...
Yeah, I kind of doubt their reference when they said there was a wrecking there. Because we never found any metal scraps or anything else in any excavation.
Can you see a pile of cars sitting around the church?
That's what it shows, the cars and everything parked between the river and the canal, so on the other side of the river.
The Ulysses House was sitting there before that, that's what burned down in what, twenty-nine? So, so the salvage yard...
Yeah, twenty-nine to, what it says in there, twenty-nine to nineteen thirty, somewhere around before that, nineteen thirty. Actually, I wasn't that long ago.
Alright.
No more history of that.
Sounds good, thanks Sean. Moving on to reported standing committees, Scott?
Yes Mayor, finance committee met today at six o'clock to discuss, finance director wanted to have a meeting about the fuel tax, state fuel tax that comes into effect in August and ten cents a gallon. Their projections, the state projected we're going to receive a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. And finance director has a five-year plan and he's looking at a shortfall in the year, the next two years for, of a thirty thousand dollars. So he wanted finance committee to be able to agree to put thirty thousand dollars of that into, to cover that shortfall. And the rest of it, a hundred and eight thousand, if that's what we're actually going to collect, will go to actually the streets, chip and seal, concrete, and any other major projects that we need to do. And hopefully maybe get East Market Street done. I know Gary and his assistant were looking at that, the cost of redoing the brick or other scenarios. That's it.
Alright, any questions? Thank you Scott.
Thank you.
Citizens comments for agenda matters? Alright, moving on to correcting and adopting the record of proceedings?
Make a motion that we approve the record of proceedings for the April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sue Mayberry, second by Scott Schwab, any discussion? I did have one thing, Sue, when you mentioned, it says Lynn Slaby, but you probably meant Marilyn Slaby.
Yeah.
Oh, sure did.
It is Marilyn, yeah.
Sure did.
And I didn't know how we fix that.
No, it's, yeah, no.
We'll just change it to Marilyn Slaby.
Lynn's there, should be Marilyn Slaby. You're right.
Alrighty, any other discussion? Roll call.
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Not in any particular to everybody, but she's filling in for Alyssa and she's done a great job for us. Keep it up. Alright, moving on to senior citizens. I did stop by and look at the door, it's closing on its own, so that repair went really well.
Did it go well down?
Yeah.
Good.
Alright, community service. Mr. Murphy got the boat all painted up and it's ready to go. Our street department is doing the mulch down at the Canalway Center and we're getting that ready for opening weekend coming up this Saturday. Kudos to Mr. Murphy.
Did the boat come out today then?
Yeah.
It did.
Yes, dry, it didn't, it's dry locked, he puts on the...
Dry locked, what did I, I thought I said dry locked.
He dry locks and paints it and then repairs it. He repaired quite a bit of the wood this year.
Yeah, it looked good, looked real good.
Alrighty, and then fire chief?
Thank you Mayor, I don't have any written report today, but just a couple of items to bring to council's attention. The radio tower that we have up at the Mylan Street Station, let me step back a little bit. With the eight hundred megahertz radio system, the county is shutting down the tower where we have our old radio repeater off Marshallville Street. And so we either need to start picking up the electric bill or pull out of the building out there. So we contacted Mitchell Communications who serviced that and to bring it down to the Mylan Street Station, the training station. And while he was there, he was kicking around the base of our tower and he says it's pretty rusty and pretty unstable. So the proposal that I got to move that down there is a little costly and he kind of considers it a Band-Aid approach, it's about two thousand dollars. And so I can live with the Band-Aid approach, because hopefully in a couple of years we'll have a new water tower that we can probably relocate that equipment to if we decide to maintain it in service. Another issue of cost and planning that we as, I believe we as a city need to think about is our Medigate, the two thousand eight Medigate. It has the, how shall I say, a plague, problematic six liter diesel engine. And that, even under warranty, that thing has been worked on probably half a dozen times and probably a couple of times after that. And each time, the way that it's configured, it's nearly taking the motor completely out and things like that. This time, our city mechanic, who is wonderful at doing a lot of things, he thought we might have had stretched head bolts, which would require removal of the motor, because he was seeing some evidence of some leaking. He also discovered that there was exhaust gases in the coolant. But as he got into it a little bit, he decided that that probably was not the problem and he was able to fix it. But he said, you know, again, when we were talking about Band-Aid approaches to the water tower, he kind of indicates that this is kind of the Band-Aid approach to keep this going. So we need to kind of put that on a, on a shortlist of, for replacement.
What was it, what was it again, a Medic aid?
Medic aid, our ambulance, ambulance ambulance.
Oh, 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 thank you.
You're replacing the motor?
We have not replaced the motor.
But that's what you're talking about?
I'm talking about replacing the, it's a two thousand eight ambulance, it's eleven years old.
And how many other ambulances do we have?
City of Canalfold has one other that we just purchased, year of two thousand and eighteen.
Alright, and then the joint effort with the township also has...
They have two relatively new ambulances.
Right.
Alrighty, any questions for Chief Durkey? Alright, Chief Schwartz had to be excused at the last minute and I excused him. Normally we'd have a replacement here, but it was a last minute family situation. Turning over to Mr. DeLasky, city engineer.
Thanks Mayor, just a couple of things to bring up tonight. May seventeenth is our opening for the Community Park Project. So we'll have prices on that day for the project. And then also working with Gary on put together a bid for the Chip and Seal Project. So that should be put together here shortly and be ready to be out to bid.
Hopefully good results for the Community Park. Street Department, Mr. Hoski?
Thank you Mayor, really the only thing I've got is, well, you touched on it already, the canal boat came out today, the parts are just about buttoned up and ready for opening weekend. The biggest thing I have is our community cleanup day coming up this Friday and Saturday. I titled it Bring Us Your Clutter. Basically, it's, you know, appliances, computers, TVs, anything that's junk that, you know, they can't get rid of, they can bring it down to us. Tires, batteries, the only thing we're not accepting is paints or liquids of any kind. I emailed all you, I believe, council members, if you can show up for a couple of hours, either Saturday or Friday or Saturday. It's just basically a way to get people to know who you are and, you know, you get...
What time vote those days?
Friday, let me make sure I got this right, Friday it's going to be from seven thirty to five. And then Saturday it's ten AM to four PM. And the street department's, basically the street department's manning it and anyone that would love to show up and give a hand for a couple hours. It is for city residents only. They have to live within the city limits and they have to show proof of address or an ID that shows their address. Township is also doing one similar, May eighteenth. And I did post that on, it's going through Facebook now, that if you live outside the city limits and you're with the township, they are holding ones that are very similar. I don't think they're taking tires. But they're doing the bulk items, you know. I've had a lot of, I've filled a lot of phone calls about people that have old TVs and, you know, things like that they can't get rid of, you know. So this is, this is just something that, you know, they bring it to us and we'll take care of it. And then they don't have the headache of doing it. But like I said, it's appliances, furniture, it can, anything but paints and liquids.
You're accepting like old refrigerators, freezers, things like that?
Yeah. Other than that, that's about all I've got really. We're trying to catch up on our patching right now with the real wet weather. It's kind of hard to patchy, so now we're just getting caught up on most of that. And as Keith said, that, you know, we've got the Chip and Seal bid going out. Got a whole list of streets to try and get taken care of. Other than that, that's all I've got for right now. I was at the Township meeting yesterday, they only had one bid for their Chip and Seal Project. So hopefully we'll get more than one bid, but we only had two last... We only had two last year, so.
Alright, any other questions for Mr. Hoski? Thank you very much for being here today. Public Utilities? Your report, planning and zoning? Anything from Steve Martin? Alrighty.
Next week?
No.
We have a meeting in the third, Thursday of the month, so.
Thanks Sue. That'll be the sixteenth?
Yes.
Alright, so HPC planning commission is May sixteenth. And that's at six thirty, right?
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty, moving on to finance director.
Thank you Mayor, the only thing I have is really just a question. Back in, I believe it was November, we talked a little bit about the non-bargaining salary structure and then the salary structure for elected officials. As we, I don't think we really reached a decision or consensus. And now with us getting closer to the filing deadlines and the upcoming election in November, I just, I guess I just wanted to check if you wanted to look at the elected official pay at all before the election, because once the election takes place, then I think you're kind of stuck with whatever salary it is for that period of time. I just wanted to see if, because I don't recall if we came to a resolution back in...
Is OPRs raising their requirement again? Because that was the reason they gave raises the last time.
It's, it's not changed yet, but we're still, we're under that threshold right now. So you're getting like ninety percent credit for a year's worth of service through OPRs. And so it's really up to you as far as whether you want to have that discussion. Personally, you should get credit.
So traditionally council or salaries have matched the OPRS threshold?
That's what we, that's what they were, it was tied to in the past, yes.
So would that go to a committee personnel? Anybody want to make a motion to have that meet? Who's on personnel?
I'm personnel chair, I mean, I have never contemplated it. But if the rest of the committee wants to meet on that topic, let me know. At this point, if you want to, I want to think about it. I'm not sure who else on, you know. Are you?
Yeah, I'm on.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to consider, if you want to meet, we can.
That's fine, whenever you want.
The next? The twenty-first?
Twenty-first?
Do we need an hour?
No.
I would think a half minute.
Half hour? Six thirty, May twenty-first?
Yep, second.
Okay.
Alright, so we have, did Scott, Sue, you made a motion, did someone make a motion?
Oh, I mean, I guess I'll make the motion and Scott's going to second it.
How long are you, an hour?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Alright, so we have a motion by Sue Mayberry, second by Scott Schwab, any discussion? Alright, that'll be for a personnel meeting on May twenty-first at six thirty.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
That's all I have Mayor.
Alright. City manager?
Yes. Two, I just think that someone already covered earlier in the meeting. First of all, we're going to install security cameras to Canalway Center and also to Picking Sheldon Park. There's been a rash of, not serious vandalism, but this just, you know, kids just being, I don't know if just being kids, man, I could really use for what we're doing on. Also, we're probably going to shut down the wifi at the Canalway Center, because that seems to attract people just hanging around there, you know, with their phones and...
It's a puppy monger, Bob.
Maybe if they, if their phones are dying, they'll go somewhere else. Because they're hanging out all hours of the evening. But Wissy Chief was here, but he's aware of what's going on there. And the cameras should be installed within the month, hopefully. Yeah, as you said, the St. Helena will start an operation this weekend on May eleventh. And we're also finalizing our business directory for folks coming to visit Canalfold. And basically, it's all the businesses that a visitor would want to try to find. There's a map on one side and then the businesses on the other side of the handout. And lastly, I'll be going to Columbus tomorrow to meet with state officials as part of the Northeast Ohio American Citizens Association. And we're going to talk about issues of concern with Northeast Ohio cities. So should be a pretty, it's pretty intense, I've done this before. And we're actually growing, you know, you have state reps and state senators. And I'm not sure who else is going to be there, we might have the Secretary of State, Frank Bubba is there too with us. So it's going to be a good day. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Cozy? I'm leaving him high and dry, because I normally go with him, so...
How far from the cameras be able to see, you know, is it just the general area? Ah, the cameras are better now. You know, we can, we can actually see the playground from the Canal, we have cameras watching cameras too. So we have two cameras underneath the patio of the Canalway Center watching each other and everything there. And the one camera will actually be watching the shelter. And the camera in the shelter is watching the shelter and playground.
You know what?
Those are all the secrets we keep at the school. We never told the kids where the cameras are.
Watching this.
Yeah.
So what, if they know? They're going to know it anyway when they look at the scene cameras.
Alright, yeah. Alright, let's move on here. Wanted to point out that the National Honor Society showed up on April twenty-seventh with a group of thirty students.
Wanted to point out that um, the National Honor Society showed up on April twenty-seventh um, with a group of thirty students uh, to clean along the canal, uh, the tow path and um, Erie Avenue, basically from the high school down to lock four. And uh, they, they did a great job to see thirty kids show up on a Saturday afternoon, and that progressed into their Box City event where they uh, tried to sleep outside in a cardboard box to simulate homelessness, and um, just a, a great group of students there. And uh, they did a great job, of course, so. One of the other things our uh, street department has done is um, you all know how hard it is to get bids from contractors, and I think we're seeing that the township saw it where uh, the chip and seal was, only had one company submit a bid, we only had one company or one person submit a bid for the tree planters. And now the um, the, what's happening to us, when we need a tree cut down, um, we're trying to bring in um, people to get, give us estimates on cutting down a tree, and um, so what they're proposing is uh, that we basically come to like a maintenance service type agreement with a tree vendor. The city of Canton does it uh, right now where they have uh, established prices, so tree people, uh, tree trimmers uh, would submit a price to us on these different sized trees that uh, we might need cut down throughout the course of the year, and they submit a bid similar to what, you know, we're getting for road bids. And we look at those bids and we accept one, and then we know for that calendar year, hey, if we need a tree cut down, we just call this company and they're going to come and cut it down, and based on the size of the base of the tree, um, we know what the price is going to be. And it's worked really well for the city of Canton, and I want to turn it over to Gary, see if there's anything I'm missing in the explanation there, Gary.
No, I mean, it, the size of the tree is one determination, and also, um, if it's close to a house or power lines, uh, it, the severity of it, you know, I mean, but there's usually three tiers to what they do with the price, and then, uh, if I'm not mistaken, um, and Dave did a lot of that footwork, but residents can use that same company as well as the city themselves. So uh, they respond to the city because they have a contract with the city, but the residents can also use that company, and they would come out and determine the size of the tree, and like I said, how close it is to a house or power lines, and they would give them a flat rate, there's a flat rate in law.
So, uh, I think, what you, I don't know if I'd need a voice motion to do something like that, Scott, with, you know, if we advertised for bids for tree trimming, or is that something Keith would?
Do we have that really, that really needs to be done?
Uh, it's, you know, the goal, Bonnie, is you wouldn't have even one that needed done, you, you know, I, in a perfect world.
I understand, that's why I'm asking, do we have?
Well, and um, you know, we have a couple trees um, right up here at the intersection of Cherry and Market Street. When you come out to the end.
Those are bad, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, so they're, and they're in the right of way, and so, you know, that, that's a good example.
It's a very bad.
Yeah, yeah, so um, so that's, that's what we're looking for, and then, like I said, in a perfect world, you'd never have to use it, and then you just turn around and bid it the next year.
So you want to have one retainer, is that what you're saying, so to speak?
Yeah, basically, you bid for the retainer, you know.
And that would be, you think, more beneficial than just using them as we needed, as needed?
What happens a lot of times, and, and, and I think, and, and what we're trying to do is be more transparent with our vendors, where um, you know, I think what happens, a good example is the township only getting one bid from one company for a chip and seal. The other companies don't get the bid for so many years, then they quit trying, you know, and um, when they quit trying, then you call them out and, you know, no, I, I'll never get to work anyway, so I'm, I'm not going to even come out and give you a price. So, that's what we're trying to.
These trees at the intersection, are they, you say they're on public right of way, but, but is anybody responsible for them other than the city? Because I know when my tree had it coming down, I paid for that.
The owner's responsible for it.
Well.
Yeah, so, and, and that's what we'll do is address, you know, reach out to the property owner and tell them we need those trees.
Do they need to come down or trim back?
I would, in my opinion, I think they need to come down completely because there's three trees, and the other problem that's there is the shrub on the right-hand side.
I don't know what shrub you're talking about.
He's talking about right there on the corner of Ninety-three and um, Market, when you come up the brick to go on to Ninety-three, right up here at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
It's a blind spot, there's all three of the, I mean, and I, I travel that road every day, go up home, you know, and you have.
They're all over the place.
Yes, you have to inch out.
They're all over the place.
Especially there, though, you have to inch out, but we have.
Well, that's a dangerous, that's, yeah.
We have seven trees on Canal Street that are dying, but they're in the right of way. If we could get a flat rate price, then maybe the residents would go, okay, it's a better deal than, I mean, when we set out to clear that almost acre of land, we had four companies come in and give us bids, and they ranged from seven thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. You know, I mean, it's, if you get four or five tree services to come in and they all compete at one time, and they say, okay, for one year, it was awarded to this company, then everyone gets it at that rate and at that price, you know. It's just one way of having one person on retainers, and that way, you're not calling.
No, I, no, I understand what you're saying. Does the electric company come out on a regular basis to cut back trees? I know they had done that at one time, I can't remember when they were last year.
Typically, what we're saying now, Sue, is, is, if, if service is interrupted, they'll come out, and the township has a really big issue, I think they tried to address it in the community news article, where, you know, they're getting a lot of canopying, where the trees are growing out over the street, and that leads to street problems, but they're having power line problems as well, so, it's um, it's definitely something, and like, I'm reaching out to Mr. phone. If, if we went to something like that, would we need, what kind of legislative action?
Depends on the price, depends on the bid, I mean, you know, if it's under five thousand dollars, you could just do PO for it, you know, it's over, you, you might want to do a competitive bid, I, I don't understand the scope of the project or what has to be.
Yeah, okay, um, so if the city of Canton, and maybe I'll, I'll send you some information so we're not here.
Let me know what you're talking about, and then we'll go from there.
Alright, I'll show you what Canton's doing and we'll go from there. Everybody okay with that?
No.
Alrighty, moving on to um, we have a map here that um, Mr. Cozy and I received, Lawrence Township received the same one. And uh, it says Lawrence Township, Canal Fulton, uh, low to moderate income area, and um, you know, I don't know, have we ever had a low to moderate?
We have in the past, and we've used the money in the past, yeah.
Okay.
Does that mean we can get certain grants now, that we couldn't before?
Right, CBG.
Right. So we do have that now, where we can qualify?
We received this, the low to moderate income area, uh, is Arcadia, bonded by Arcadia, and is the railroad tracks?
Uh, yeah.
Look at the tracks, everything southwest of that. So I, we were, we were anxious.
Well, no, actually, well, yeah, for us, you're right, the railroad tracks, yeah. So, alright, and I can pass this around if anybody wants to look at it, so. And then I would ask uh, council's permission to uh, when it's time to go into executive session to uh, bringing up to speed on a, the potential disciplinary issue. Just, the issue came about, yeah, came to our attention, I guess. So, um, and uh, moving on to parts and rec. We mentioned the canal boat opening up, uh, any other questions related to parts and rec? Big opening day, so, looking forward to it, the uh, mother ball races is this weekend as well, and um, so, we should have a good crowd in town. Law Director?
Uh, pursuant to request of council, uh, I suppose, and I didn't get the other formally letters, and I have the state representatives requesting clarification on the Cherry Street Bridge, and I'm waiting to hear from them. I think council provided copies of the letters, so, any questions, we have to leave them and address them.
Alrighty. Third readings.
Resolution four nineteen, a resolution by the council of the city of Canal Fulton, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the board of trustees of Lawrence Township, Stark County, Ohio, for maintenance and repair of shared roadways.
Motion to pass, good.
No, it's all you.
Motion to pass Resolution four nineteen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott Schwab, second by Dan Booker Jr., any discussion?
Yes, um, the um, the signature page, they've got the trustees, were we not going to have a signature page for the council as well on this?
I thought I signed something, I wonder.
Um, there's, there's, it's just the Lawrence Township trustees.
Oh, I see where you're at.
I don't see where there's anything for us, and if they're signing, do, I mean, I'm just asking, are we supposed to, in, you know, in turn, sign like they are and have the same specifics here, because this is their approved deformed for their council for Lawrence Township? Should we have a page separate for us?
Yeah, there's a page missing here.
Yeah. I think it's the actual, yeah.
I mean, because all this should be replicated as for us, just like the town.
Yeah, ours will only be signed by Mark, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The OPRs city.
Yeah, and we had. Yeah.
There's missing a page.
Because I know.
Is this it? Mark?
Yeah. It says three of four, and we've only got one, two, and three.
Yeah, this, this might be it.
I never noticed it before.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, the first ones were signed by our officials.
Yeah.
But they went back and they.
Had to fill in a number.
Fill in the blanks, and they, they signed them again with them, and they sent copies here, but I don't know if they were, if we ever.
Scott's packet has it, for whatever reason, something, maybe, I bet you the printer, I guess sometimes will do that.
Yep.
This is, yeah, we have to say.
Well, whatever signatures are required, as long as they're done, I, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was Mark and uh, Gérard.
Alrighty. Alright, roll call?
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Scott Swab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Another second reading, moving on to first readings.
Ordinance ten nineteen, and ordinance amending ordinance forty-five eighteen and providing for changes to previously authorized appropriations, twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars for archaeological study and other expenses at Kennedy Park. Ordinance eleven nineteen, and ordinance amending ordinance forty-five eighteen and providing for changes to previously authorized appropriations, forty-five thousand dollars to YMCA utilities.
Uh, purchase orders, um, first one is purchase order number twelve thousand one fifty to Ganley Ford, Inc., in the amount of thirty-four thousand for a two thousand nineteen F three fifty utility truck. This is for the utility department and was included in their capital budget for the year.
Motion to approve PO one-two-one-five-oh, in the amount of thirty-four thousand to Ganley Ford.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott Schwab, second by Danny Loesch, any discussion?
Have we received it, or is it still being built?
Still being built.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call?
Scott Swab?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Uh, the next two purchase orders were um, added, I think, by Mr. Deleski, uh, to amend the engineering and design work for the new water tower. The first one is under the five thousand dollar threshold, but I included it because it, both will necessitate a, an appropriation amendment here in the, at the next uh, upcoming council meetings, so. Uh, purchase order number twelve thousand one sixty-eight to Civ Pro Engineering in the amount of two thousand one hundred for an additional waterline survey to connect the Worcester Street uh, waterline to the new water tower.
Is uh, this, uh, are there going to be other um, streets at an issue where we're going to have to put more money towards the engineering, other than Worcester Street?
Well, this is to run the mains up, up to Worcester, and right now we're stopping, I think, at Streedy, and so this will, this will get it up. I think we're going to look at going through one of the alleys to get it up to Worcester, and then run it to, just pass, just up through the appropriation line.
Is that part of the engineering report to go towards the grant?
Yes.
Is this part of it, that will be added to it?
And this, will this help us with our scoring, do we believe? Because it's additional areas or won't have any impact on scoring?
I think it, it fell within the original study area in the first place, so I don't, I don't think it'll do anything negatively or positively towards.
Well, because it affects the Worcester Street Worcester Plum, certainly. Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, yes. It'll help us?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty. Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion in a second.
Will the uh, approve PO RGO one-two-one-six-eight?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion uh, by Danny Loesch, second by Dan Booker Jr. Any discussion? Roll call?
Scott Swab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Purchase order number twelve thousand one sixty-nine to CTI Engineers, Inc., in the amount of nine thousand three hundred for additional waterline design to connect the Worcester Street to the new water tower.
Motion to approve PO one-two-one-six-nine to CTI Engineers, Inc., in the amount of ninety-three hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Dan Booker Jr., second by Danny Loesch, any discussion?
This is, this one says Civ Pro up at, on the top, is that the CTI?
That's the one we just passed, this is the one I read, just, or uh.
They're transposing the packet from what you said.
Yeah. So, the ninety-three hundred to CTI is what I just read.
Right, okay, so we're now.
Did I say Civ Pro, I meant CTI?
And Civ Pro is the twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, I just.
Yep.
Oh.
We okay there?
Yeah.
Alright, roll call?
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Scott Swab?
Yes.
Purchase order number twelve thousand one seven-five to the YMCA of Central Stark County in the amount of forty thou, forty-five thousand per Resolution thirty-two dash eighteen for the expense of running the utility lines to the Canal Fulton YMCA.
Move to approve uh, PO RGO one-two-one-seven-five?
Second.
Motion by Danny Loesch, second by Scott Schwab, any discussion? Roll call?
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Scott Swab?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Eric.
There's no bills to report, Mayor.
Okay, old, new, other business? Counselor? Nothing else? Mr. Booker?
No.
Alright, reporter special committees? And uh, citizens comments? Cheryl Rossi?
Yes. Um, as a volunteer, I just want to take a minute to thank everyone for their generosity and their support with the two half-tail fundraisers. The softball tournament on Saturday was a huge success despite a day-long rain, and Sunday was even more fun. But also the um, night at the races, which is coming Saturday, was totally sold out, so thank you, everyone.
It's sold out?
It's sold out.
Wow, okay. I'm stuck with my grandkids now. Anything else?
Just about to, reference the Cherry Street Bridge, it's probably directed towards Eeyore. When did you, or when did anybody find out about the renaming of this, the process that was going on through the state? When was this, when did somebody find out, who found out?
Well, Gary got a phone call from ODOT, so, but first of all, I'll tell you that we've never received anything formally in the form of a letter, an email, any kind of phone call correspondence from anybody. The only way we would have known about the past history, at least I would have known about the past history, was when the Albrecht family showed up. So from the time Gary got a phone call from somebody at ODOT District Four saying they had these signs.
When was that?
September fourth.
September of last year?
September of last year.
September. Yeah, probably maybe September, October time, probably.
September of last year, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you didn't know about till this year, and the discrepancy, and I'm trying to clarify, is the state had to notify, or ask us ahead of time? As far as the renaming of the bridge, was there something involved that they had to? As far as the renaming of the bridge, was there something involved that they had to ask the city, or City Hall, before they could be named, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and they never did that?
No, they had, um, I'll agree one better, uh. Two minutes. Sorry. Under ordinance, uh. Anyway, uh, I think.
Nineteen ninety-eight, that this, the city council, okay, or, um, city council renamed, named the bridge Cherry Street Bridge, okay? Then, also, in the same piece of legislation, um, they allowed a memorial plaque to be erected, in honor of the engineer, um, but they have never contacted us again, but I don't, I don't wanna go through this again, they have not ever asked us for permission on this renaming issue, and I think they're in violation of Ohio law by doing so, specifically higher vice code section five-five-one-one point zero-nine. And also in that code section, all right, it states specifically that once a bridge is named, which is located within the municipal corporation, the territorial limits of the municipal corporation, the bridge may not be renamed without the consent of the municipal corporation, shall not be renamed, okay? So, you know, and.
It's pretty specific, basically, that they're in violation of naming this bridge without contacting or getting approval from the city.
They never got us, they never got our opinion.
Okay, so the argument from this Stangelo family is that this doesn't legally rename the bridge. So, I guess my question is, what's the difference between a memorial designation, which literally will say on the sign, this is now the Stangelo Bridge, and the legal name? How are the two different, I guess would be my question.
Well, my, when I read the legislation, it said, "The bridge shall be renamed." The Corporal Lance Stangelo Memorial Bridge, that's what I saw in the legislation, that to me is like, that city is a memorial part of a highway.
It doesn't parse words, and I agree with that, and I think, and this is what I had said to somebody earlier, was most of these other memorial designations for highways, like for example on twenty-one with Sergeant Michael Barkley.
Right.
They say, "A portion of this road shall be known as," whereas this says, "The bridge shall be known as." It's not just a portion of the highway on the bridge, it is the bridge in its entirety, which has a specific meaning within the Ohio Revised Code, it's the entire structure.
If it named part in State Route ninety-three, I would know a part of it, but they're talking about the bridge.
Right.
So, they're specifically talking about the bridge, and specifically writing out a problem is they did not go through the proper process through the state in order to rename it, or the amendments on the story. Well, I, I think the DeVall family went through the channels they went through. The heir came with Representative Slavy. She didn't have O.D.O. do their due process to see what that was and to go back and meet with the city to do it, but the DeVall family, you know, everything they did, they did what they, they were supposed to do. But my, my issue comes to this, is, you know, how many times do we memorialize one structure? When does it come back to the next family that has feelings for that location and so on, then, then it becomes a repetitive cycle? And, and I, I, I don't get it, and I'm a vet, so vet bashing doesn't even need to come in to this, but it, it's a simple, it's a, in, in memory, a memorial of someone right now. How many are we gonna put on?
I have a question, Doug, when, how did you find out about, you know, I, I mean, like, is there, just reading state legislature, like, how?
That, that this was coming about?
Yeah, because like I said, we, we were like mystified by, you know, Gary got this phone call saying, hey, we got these signs coming, where do you wanna put them, or where are you gonna put them?
Well, and actually, the, the first initial phone call was, the gentleman said, "This is coming down the line," and he was wanting measurements, that's all, that's all this gentleman was asking me for, was what size sign are you looking at? Well, that all depends on where you're putting it and if we have the right way to put the signs up, um, because at that time, the Hicks property was still standing, and there was no way to put a sign on that end of, that end of the road. So, that was the only conversation that I had with the gentleman at O.D.O., was this is coming down the line, but we're trying to figure out what size you want, and the city was gonna pay for the signs, the city was gonna pay to have it put up, but they were gonna make the signs, and what size do we, and at that point, I was, well, it all depends on if we have the variance to put them up. And that's the last conversation I had with the gentleman.
And was the city supposed to pay for it? I didn't know that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. The only thing, the only thing the state was gonna do was they were gonna make the signs. The city was gonna pay for the signs, the city was going to pay to put them up, and what size did we want? And I had told them that on the Hicks property side, if there was gonna be any sign, that it would have to be a smaller sign or some other way of putting it up because of the fact of the property standing right there.
And they had the signs, are they already made?
Yes.
What did they say exactly?
Uh, I don't know, I, they're still, they're still wrapped and bound up.
So, what, did you, did you have to tell them to go ahead and do the signs?
No. They did, they did, they did it all. They called me to ask what size, and I even drove to Manchester because on six nineteen, there's a smaller sign, and, and I don't remember the gentleman's name.
Westingell or Westingell.
Okay.
That was my husband's best friend.
And that was, that's a smaller sign because they wanted to put these huge signs up, I mean, they wanted to put a five-foot sign up, and it's just, you know, it's gonna go in front of the canoe livery on their property, and it would be on the Hicks side property.
So, I guess it goes back to my question, how did you guys find out?
Just one of my friends, just gossip, heard they were going to rename the Cherry Street Bridge, and.
Do you know when that would, cause you, when you guys show up in January?
January.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the first, first time, and it, it was like, why are we gonna name a bridge again, you know, or memorialize it again? You know, and I, I, I just didn't, didn't understand that.
You found out about it in January, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they came to our council meeting.
Okay.
So, and that's where.
We found out on our way to church, I called you the next day.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it was one of those where you're, you're hearing about it, and it's already gone through the legislative process and the waiting period, and then boom, here it is.
All right.
Um, I have a comment too.
Yes.
My name is Laura Stevens, I live at six oh nine Worcester. In regards to the resolution that you mentioned, Scott, um, you said that it changes the name of the bridge to the Cherry Street Bridge, but it doesn't. It just mentions it, and it says that the Albrecht family is not allowed to change the name of the bridge to the Wayne Albrecht Memorial Bridge. And then there's a letter from Village Council, Dan Mayberry, and it says that the inscription on the plaque is supposed to say, "In memory of Wayne Albrecht." And there's a reason why the signs are facing outwards and not incoming traffic.
So, would I answer that?
The resolution did name the Cherry Street Bridge, I mean, it's, it's.
No, it doesn't, I have it right here permanently.
All right, on, on, and there was a compromise in, with the Albrecht family, put a plaque on.
Because the city did not wanna change it.
Probably what I was suggesting at this point, or, is we, we made the inquiry, or court of council, why do we wait till we hear back from, um.
Right.
Power to be, and then we can bring this up again, I.
They have no idea, I've talked to the Senator's office today, I've spoken to Romer's office, they have no clue what the process is, they don't know anything, and that's because they're both new. Well, I mean, it's the truth. So, I, I just want things to be handled in a civil matter, you know?
So, the, the issue with Representative Romer, he's new to the position with it, he, he has to, Romer has to introduce an amendment to the law, to say Lance Corporal Stangelo Memorial Highway.
But, the bridge is not memorialized to Wayne Albrecht.
It, it's, it's a memorial.
It was never approved.
No, it, see, here's the issue, that bridge was owned by Stark County, okay? When this thing went down, the compromise that the Albrechts made with the village council was just what they did. Hold on one second, the plaques were already made, the Stark County engineer wanted to name it that, which he had the right, but the Albrecht family compromised, they put the plaques facing the outside so they didn't have to do the expense of a number, more, more plaques.
They had two made, right?
No, they had three designed, the engineer picked the one which was made.
So, they only had one?
Yes, and then it went on the bridge.
The county chose the plaque.
The county chose.
It went, it went in front of the, um, Stark County Commissioner's office because the family wanted to change the name of the bridge to the Wayne Albrecht Memorial Bridge, and the Stark County Commissioners turned it down, and that's why that resolution that you mentioned.
No, 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 you're wrong, you're absolutely wrong, you are wrong.
All right. Anyways, uh, we're not getting anywhere, you guys are having a discussion, like, Mr. Thelma said, we need to get a response back from the state legislature.
Well, then you guys need to get your facts straight because, you know, the family is disgusted, and I don't appreciate that, like, how can you sit there and laugh?
I'm not laughing, you said, get my, our facts straight.
Yes.
We have been working on this and trying to resolve this.
This is a political issue at this point, and it should've been handled back in September.
We didn't know about it then.
The city did, and you guys knew about it in January, so it should've been looked into back then. It wouldn't be like this between the families had it been researched months ago.
I got news for you, I, I beg to differ because I, I think you can see where we're at now, is this day was coming, no matter what, so, um, but anyway, I appreciate your, your comments, everybody, and coming tonight, we'll work through this, we'll get through it together, uh, like we always do, so I appreciate your time, so.
Mayor, the only thing I wanna add to this is, when something happens pertaining to our street superintendent getting a phone call, this situation should've been handled by our administration. They should've been on the phone immediately finding out what's going on. It's not up to one, two, three, four, five, six of us, we didn't come on board here to do the work. We didn't come on board here to do the foundational figuring out what's happening, that's not, that's not what we're here for.
So, are you criticizing me?
I'm criticizing you, and I'm criticizing the city manager.
Wait a second, my, when I got the phone call from him, my, the House bill passed.
I'm talking September fourth.
I was gonna put the signs up.
Right. When, when somebody tells us it's coming down the pipe because they approved it.
You weren't even curious as to what's going on, this bridge?
When the House bill's, when the House bill's passed by your state legislature.
It was passed in March.
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking September.
No, no.
It would've been passed before that.
It was passed way before that, so when I met with Senator Rudner, and she told me, I voted on it, the governor signed it, it's law.
So, then why are, why are, why are we work, why are we dealing with it when he decided to put the signs up? Why are we dealing with it now?
Because.
Why?
You had the Albrecht family come and question us because up until then.
Why? I didn't have them come and question us.
They had a right to, they.
Sure they did, but if you had already decided the signs are gonna go up.
When, when your supervisor.
What were we supposed to do?
When your supervisor tells you something, you do it, and when the state of Ohio tells you, "We own the bridge, we just renamed it," until the Albrechts showed up and contested it and caused us to go back and look.
Well, we caused the historical research on, on the bridge, if, if, if the state of Ohio said it's our bridge, and this is gonna be named the bridge, and, okay, and the signs come in.
Well, then you tell us what you're doing.
Yeah.
We don't, why is it our decision then to, 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 to make a decision?
It was a challenge.
What?
Where's the, the, the family came in with challenging the decision.
Well, deal with the challenge.
We are, we are.
We are.
And if you look back twenty years ago, the council dealt with the challenge, it, you're the legislative body, and if it requires resolution on the part of the city, it has to come before you, is that correct?
On March fifth, I got an email from Mr. Cozy saying, "City council will need to decide what they wanna do with this," and I'm like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, 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 that's what they did twenty years ago, that's the job of council.
And you drop it in our laps.
That's your job.
It's your.
No, it's not my job.
You're legislators here, and, and the council.
My job is to take your recommendation, not my job to do, I mean, we've got people in the, in the, in the, in the resident doing more work than you two did combined.
I spent hours.
I'm sorry, but this is not my responsibility to figure out.
It is, it's.
That I'm gonna take your word for it, and you better give me good stuff.
No, I, we don't have to give you good stuff, the state voted on it, the, the senator tells me, I voted on it, the governor signed it, it's law.
Then what's the problem? Then why are you?
Exactly, the problem is, because now we have more information, because the Albrechts brought it to our attention, please let me finish, and, and you're right, that documentation that you have that goes back to twenty years ago, that's all new information to me, we, we were discovering it, and that's the way it appears to me, it, it's very similar to what you're saying, and that's the Cherry Street Bridge, that's the name of the bridge, they were given permission to put plaques on that bridge, that's the way the legislative body left it twenty years ago, okay? And now, here we are twenty years later, because there's a different owner of the bridge, it's no longer the county that our council dealt with twenty years ago, now it's O.D.O. who owns the bridge.
O.D.O. has no documentation, though, of a name change.
Exactly, and that's.
We signed it to the county because they owned the bridge at the time.
Well, I'm waiting to hear back from Rick Florrie, so, I'll know tomorrow, hopefully.
He has all that information, that's right, guy, because we don't have it here.
He didn't tell me that the Albrecht family.
All right, so let's, let's move on, just so you understand, we, we are where we're at right now, and yes, it is, it will be a, it'll be, because when that response comes back from the state, whenever it does, we have to make a decision, and are we gonna be okay with them renaming the bridge that has two boundaries within our munac, municipality, then that'll.
I don't believe it's a legal name change. Go look on a map, check with the county auditor, it's not the Wayne Albrecht Memorial Bridge, or it's not the Michael Stangelo Memorial Bridge, it doesn't change the name, it still shows you right on the map, ninety-three in the state of Ohio, the shape of it, and, you know, the legislation that you keep talking about, it says, "In memory of," it does not allow the Wayne Albrecht Memorial Bridge, and that's why council said that, they made it specifically clear. So, do they have that email, or would that attachment, the letter from Dan Mayberry?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, they gave it to me.
Yeah, yeah, so you guys have it right there, it's in black and white, that he did not want the bridge renamed.
And we, we offered those documents to the state to, to show the history of, you know, what has transpired.
I'm the one who provided that to them.
Yeah.
Very well, I provided that to them, so, yes, they're very well aware of that email.
But the legislation in question is the city actually passed the resolution naming it the Cherry Street Bridge, and, and, so, it's there, it's always known.
The, the one that I've seen does not name it, so if you have one that shows the name, I'd love to see it.
All right, all right.
Mayor?
Yes.
The legislation that we're talking about states a resolution opposing the renaming of the Cherry Street Bridge and declaring an emergency, December the twelfth, nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, that doesn't rename it.
It's, it's opposing the rename.
It wasn't renamed the Wayne Albrecht Bridge.
Right, it's not asking to name it the Cherry Street Bridge either.
It, it was the Cherry Street Bridge.
Yes.
They were putting the resolution out there not to name it the Wayne Albrecht Memorial Bridge. It has always been the Cherry Street Bridge. That's the issue.
Right.
It's in memory of Wayne Albrecht and why do we memorialize a bridge or a building or a statue fifteen times? That's the issue, it was done.
Double stack.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much again, uh, I appreciate your time and, uh, so we need a motion to go into executive session also.
Hang on a second, real quick, um, since the three of you guys all spoke and just to make it easy on our interim clerk, could you just give your names and addresses so that when she can recognize voices when she's speaking?
Sorry, I'm Charles Mashburn, eight oh eight Neshire Drive. Doug Smith, twenty thirty-two, summary being direct.
Christina Albrecht, twenty thirty-two, summary being direct.
All right.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
And that would be to, pardon, it's all ready here, should have a fair word. Oh, let's see, uh. Would be a discipline of a public employee or official?
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion by Dan Booker and seconded by Danny Loesch, any discussion? Roll call.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Scott Swab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
All right, motion to adjourn, thank you everybody, have a great evening. Any update? I had it, it was going to be about sixty to thirty-four.